Gary.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, 10:04. Let Michael open it up so we can move forward. So everyone will get through the whole. Are you busy letting people in still?
We're good to go.
Good to go. Then open up and give us our rules.
Go ahead, Michael. Give them the rules and then I'll.
Rules.
Rules. There's always.
This is a, this is a school, so we have to give this, we have to give everybody rules. Okay. The rules are that there are no rules. Basically, if you have any questions, put them in the chat box, and I believe that's the only rule that we have to follow today. Other than that, keep yourself on mute. We have a great presentation and that's pretty much it. So Gary, please start it off.
Perfect. Thank you, Michael, and good morning to everybody and welcome to another Aventura Marketing Council Chamber of Commerce Zoom meeting today. I'm Gary Pyatt of Association First in Campbell Property Management and proud chairman of the Board of Directors for the Aventura Marketing Council Chamber of Commerce. Lucia Baez-Geller, we are very delighted to welcome you here today as our new Miami Dade County School Board member. And as Michael just spoke, thank you to Michael, as always, for being our fearless Zoom administrator and candidate for 2022 Aventura City Commissioner. So far, Michael has handled over 100 Zoom meetings for us since this March, so we thank him for all of the work that he's doing. And as always, this meeting will be recorded and available to everyone later on. Elaine always sends this out with the participants and things for everybody's information. Also today, many of our principals are here with us for this program today. They've received a personal reminder, as Elaine said, only call, earlier call from our volunteer Marge Rosenblatt. So Marge, as always during these times, everybody's working Zoom and remotely. Thank you for everything you do and for taking the time to see that. Everybody was yet reminded one more time for the meeting today. Thanks to our meeting sponsors. We all know without these programs, our meeting sponsors are extremely important to us. So without them, it's impossible to run these even though we're not in person. So thanks to our meeting sponsor today, Chris Ferreira from FPNL, and we'll be hearing from him in just a minute. We're also always happy to have our Aventura Mayor Enid Weissman on with us. We all know her extreme, extensive background. Let's put it in education, as well as our Commissioner from Aventura, Rachel Friedland. And from Sunny Isles Beach, we have our Commissioner Larissa Savetian and former Vice Mayor Lou Thaler. We also have our former North Miami Beach Mayor Phyllis Smith. I saw Phyllis on earlier with us today. And representing Miami Dade Commissioner Sally Hayman's office is her aide Alexis Mosley. To thank you guys for all of you do for us and supporting us during these times and working extremely hard in your individual communities and taking the time out to attend our meeting today. We also, as this program is about education, we have a number of school principals with us today. Assistant Principals, Vice Principals with us today. So we thank you for taking your time out of a busy morning here at 10:07 in the morning. I know that our school board member would like to know who's here representing their schools. So what we're going to do is I'm going to ask the school administrators, the school principals, assistant principals, and vice principals that are here with us today to unmute yourself, give us your name, your title, and your school. Since we have about 20 schools represented, we're going to start, represent it today. We're going to start with the elementary schools. We're going to follow by the K-8 schools, the middle schools, the senior highs, and then to the charter schools. So when I call your level of school, what I'd like you to do in that order, let's see, you're all educators. Let's follow this. Okay, unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and then mute yourself again, and we'll kind of follow that order. So let's see how this works. As I said, first up will be the elementary schools. So if the elementary school individuals that are with us today, if you could unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Janine Townsley, Principal from Reynolds Park Elementary School. On the speakerphone with me, I have Dr. Mildred Mejia from Ojas Grove. She's having trouble logging in.
Next elementary school.
My name is George Mizoun, Principal of Miami Beach South Point Elementary School.
Anybody else here from an elementary school? Unmute yourself.
Yes. Janine Townsley is.
I thought you heard me.
Yep. Okay, we got you and Marge. Is George Mizoun with us?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. We got the two of them. Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that.
Everybody's covered. Okay. Perfect. All right.
You want me to go net to the next one, Elaine?
Absolutely. Next one.
Perfect. The next schools represented today, if you will introduce yourself, and those are from the K-8 centers.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Yessani Al Bolente. I'm the proud principal of Aventura Waterways K-8 Center.
Good morning. I'm Scott Saperstein, Principal of Ruth K. Broad Bay Harbor K-8 Center. And with me today is my assistant principal, Israel Sosa.
Good morning.
Anyone else from a K-8 center?
Good morning. Mary Kate Parton, Proud Principal, David Lawrence Jr., K-8 Center.
And good morning. Melissa Mesa, Principal of Normanus Etta Cup Sunny Isles Beach K-8.
Good morning.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
The United Signative School Counselor, Anmeida Ives K-8.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll ask you to unmute yourselves and introduce yourselves, and those will be any middle schools.
Hi, good morning. Mary Murphy, Proud Principal of Nautilus, Miami Beach Nautilus Middle School.
Anybody else?
Yes, it would be Francisco. Francisco Garnica.
Good morning. Francisco Garnica, Principal at IPREP Academy North, the one and only. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Anybody else in middle schools? All right. Now we move up the ladder. So we'll ask you to unmute yourself and introduce yourself, and those would be our senior high schools.
Veronica Martin, North Miami Beach Senior High School, representing Randy Milliken, Principal.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Contessa Bryant, the Principal at New World School of the Arts, and I'm on with my assistant principal, Dr. Maggie Rodriguez.
Good morning, everyone.
Anybody else from a senior high school?
Good mor, good morning, everyone. Adam Kaznitsky, I'm the proud principal at Dr. Michael M. Crop Senior High. And good morning again.
Last call for senior high schools. All right. Thank you all so far. And lastly, we'd like to unmute yourself and introduce yourself, and those would be those from our charter schools.
Good morning. I'm Anna Natalee. I am the Principal from Bridge Prep North Miami Beach. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Edward Gores. I'm the Principal of Salem North Middle High.
Any other charter schools? Anybody else Elaine on from the charter schools? Is David with us?
No, he had signed up. David and Anthony from our Aventura Charter Schools. Maybe they'll be signing on a little bit later, but all right.
Perfect. So again, thank you all educators for taking your time out today to join us and for all that you're doing during, obviously, these challenging times. So thank you so much for everything that you do. At this time, I'd like to introduce, as I said before, our sponsor, and that would be Chris Ferreira from FPNL.
Thank you, Gary, and good morning, everyone. It's great to be with you all here today and to hear more from our, our new school board member later on in the program. But before we get started, I did want to share just some things I've been working on at FPL over the last few months and share some really exciting stuff. So I'm going to bring up just a couple of slides here just to help me out. Can everyone see my screen? Perfect, perfect. So at FPL, you might have heard us from our commercials or from, from me talking at another event. We're always working on delivering clean, affordable, and reliable energy. And these three pillars include our work in our 30 by 30 program, which is our, our commitment to install 30 million new solar panels in our power plant, similar to what's behind me here on my virtual background throughout the state of Florida by the year 2030. We've also announced our, the world's largest community solar program, which is called FPL Solar Together. And it allows you to really sign up for solar energy without having to go through the hassle of installing panels on your roof, or maybe you don't have the ability to install panels on your roof, you live in a condominium, et cetera. We also deliver reliable energy. We've been working for years and investing into smart technology. So you have a smart meter in your home. We have smart switches throughout the grid, which help us anticipate outages and issues on our system to reduce outages, outages, and also outage time. And sometimes we're, we're even able to fix an outage without having to roll a truck out, which helps save customer money. And the last point is affordable energy. So you may not know, but over the last 10 or 15 years, your FPL bill has actually gone down about 10%. And that's just really an example of what's come out from our smart, our smart long-term investments and not only clean and affordable energy, but also our reliability and our improvements in the smart grid. But over the last nine, 10 months, we've also been working on some, some other stuff to help out during these challenging times, not only with the pandemic, but also the economic impacts that the pandemic has had. Back when the, when, when the pandemic started around March and April, we immediately suspended disconnections for customers for non-payment, and we also started providing payment plans and payment extensions. We also went to the Public Service Commission and requested to give a one-time credit for fuel savings, which is traditionally done over a year-long period, and we were able to deliver a 25% reduction on your May 2020 bill. But we didn't just stop there. We also committed $5 million in emergency funding for community-based organizations and partnered with, with organizations that would help with the food and security issues in our community, such as Farm Share, Feeding South Florida, and even a local group by the name of Joshua's Heart Foundation, North Miami Beach. And we also, we also worked on developing some innovative programs, such as the Low Income Credit Assistance Program. We committed $15 million to give a credit on 2021 bills for anyone that qualified in 2020 or qualifies in 2021 for the Light Heat Program. And we also just now announced, and we're accepting applications just now in January for the Main Street Credit Recovery Program. So if you're qualifying small business, you can sign up with us, and you are eligible to receive up to a 10% credit on the energy portion of your bill for 2021. But we just didn't stop there. As I mentioned, we, we worked with our community partners. We donated $500,000 to United Way for COVID-19 relief. We delivered emergency meal kits for homebound seniors during storm season, and we've worked with local groups to donate over $245,000 for hunger relief efforts. So I'll include in the chat some of the information, the contact information for if anyone on the call wants to get in touch with us to get more information about the program or to apply for some of the programs I, I mentioned. I'll mention that in the chat later. I believe, Gary, at this point, I'm introducing our, our speaker and the mayor.
That would be correct, but one second before that, we have another principal that joined us. So if Dr. Mildred, I might get this, Mejia, if you could just really quickly unmute yourself and introduce yourself, and then Chris can continue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Did you, she didn't unmute.
Okay, then, Chris. It's all yours. Go.
Am I ready? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was having difficulties this morning. Happy New Year to all. It's a pleasure seeing everyone again. I'm Dr. Mildred Mejia from Ojas Elementary. A pleasure seeing everyone this morning.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you very much for joining us and taking the time. Chris, go ahead.
Second, I believe we've got Bernie Osborne on now, another principal.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Pleasure to be here.
Just give us your school.
Oh, sorry. Sable Palm Elementary.
Absolutely.
Thank you for joining us.
Actually, Elaine, also, Mr. Trichologist logged on also from.
Oh, okay.
Trying, Chris. I'm trying to get you there.
Anthony?
Good morning. How's everyone doing?
Fine. Just give us your school.
Aventura City of Excellence School, ACES.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else? Michael?
No, I, that's, that's it. We're good. We're up to date.
All right. We're going to cut that off right now. Chris, on to you for the introduction of our guest speaker.
Okay, thank you. So at this moment, I'm honored to have the opportunity to introduce our new Miami Dade School Board Member, Lucia Baez-Geller. For 16 years, our community was fortunate to have Dr. Martin Carp, who represents before he retired. And this past November, Lucia won the election for the District Three that stretches from Northeast Dade all the way through Miami Beach. Lucia has dedicated the last 15 years of her life to education by teaching thousands of local students, where her education initiatives go way beyond her Miami Dade classrooms and to Tallahassee and even Washington. She has received numerous awards and has worked with organizations such as the Florida Education Association, the National Education Association, Educational Excellence School Advisory Council, and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. She also served as Media Ambassador for the Hispanic Scholarship Fund and Education Chair with League of Women Voters. Now, before we get to Lucia, I'd like to ask our Aventura Mayor Enid Weissman, herself a superstar in the field of education, for her remarks.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much, and good morning to everyone. You know, this is always a fun day. I, I get to see all of my old friends, some of my new friends. Nothing has been more challenging for anyone in our society this year than it has been for our schools, our principals, and our teachers. Starting last March, and again, becoming increasingly more challenging as the days go by. So I want all of you to know you are looking at real, live heroes who are on the front field of this battle that we are having every single day. I take my hat off to every one of you. You have my utmost respect. During this time, you know, out of bad, there's often good things that happen. And we have the most remarkable woman that has been elected as our school board member. I've got to know her quite well. Actually, earlier this week, we walked schools together. And we are, we're, we're so lucky to have her. What sets her truly apart, she's a teacher. And those of you that know me, you know what happens in the classroom. It doesn't happen in anybody's office. And the fact that she did 15 years in a classroom, she understands at a very personal level the challenges facing our students, our parents, and our teachers today. We are so delighted to welcome you into this northeast, northeast corridor of Dade County, our district. We're delighted to have you as our school board member. It's with so much honor and pleasure, my new friend Lucia Baez-Geller.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Weissman. I'm so honored by your words and your remarks, and it has been great getting to know you and spending time together. You are very fun, and you know your way around schools. So thank you. That's very exciting. Good morning, everybody. Good morning to Gary and Elaine. Thank you for having me here this morning and speaking to the Aventura Marketing Council Chamber of Commerce. And good morning to my amazing administrators. You're all here. I know how much work you have to do. I'm so honored to be representing you and to be your liaison, your lifeline, and to serve you. And that's my main goal and purpose, is to serve you the best. To all the elected officials in this meeting, including Mayor Weissman, thank you for your great contribution to education, and it's truly my pleasure, my honor, to work with you on behalf of the children in this community in Northeast Dade. I'm aware of the number of years of partnership that the Aventura Marketing Council has had. I really enjoyed while I was on the campaign trail, being a part of the forum. It was so well-attended, and I could tell that everybody really trusts your organization and that they know that you have the best interests of your members in mind. And so it's great to see that you walk the walk, you talk the talk, and you support a lot of our schools, specifically here, as you said, in the northeast portion of Miami Dade. I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate all the work you've done, accomplished, and I hope that we can continue doing that. I could tell you, as an educator and everybody on this call, all the administrators, we love partnerships. We love organizations that are willing to go above and beyond and take an interest in our students because we can't do it alone. I couldn't do it alone as a teacher. I know my principals here and assistant principals can't do it alone. We rely on those of you out in the field to work with us, to make our students stronger, to make our curriculum stronger, and to provide oftentimes our students the opportunities that, that we may not be able to within the four walls of our classroom. So it's really a privilege to be here, to get to know you all, and I thank you for this opportunity. I have been on the job for a couple of months now. I don't know if that makes me still a newbie, but I've already had the opportunity of visiting schools, meeting so many of you on this call right now, and really, truly witnessing firsthand the amazing work that's going on in Northeast Dade right now. I've been able to witness IPREP North and their amazing robotics program, their Lego program. You guys, I don't know if you know, but they have robots that can solve a Rubik's Cube. I've never seen anything like that. It's amazing. Aventura Waterways K-8, what can I say, Dr. Aponte? It's incredible what you do to campuses. It's like she's running two full schools. The academies are amazing. The Foreign Language Academy, the Finance Academy, all of these things, all these opportunities that are really prepping our students for the real world. Dr. Crop, Michael Crop Senior High, Dr. K is so amazing, visiting. You were one of my first school, I think you were actually my first school ever. Thank you for welcoming me. Thank you for showing me your amazing CTE program, and most importantly, your, your performing arts program. But most importantly, all of the former students that went to Crop that now teach there, that have pride in their school, so amazing. Donso for Aventura High and ACES. I just went to go see you all. So incredible how you all are able to be at the cutting edge of curriculum, of innovation, and the opportunities that you are providing our students. It's been such an inspiring ride, and I'm not even all the way done with my Northeast schools. But most importantly, thank you for opening the doors to all the educators at your schools who are enthusiastic, engaged, excited, even under these trying circumstances. It's incredible to go into these rooms, see all the little kids with their face shields sitting perfectly, all masks on. I mean, it's an endeavor I can never even imagine. And I know for sure that you're all providing the most amazing educational experiences to our students. A little bit about me, very quickly, I have been a resident of Miami Beach my entire life. I've been a teacher now for 15 years at Miami Beach Senior High, and I have taught thousands of students, like many of you on this call, and I still have a great relationship with them. They got me elected, them and their families, and they also are a part of my team, especially here on the call. Mateo Lopez, he was a former student who went to UF. So all of you gators out there, I have a gator working for me. I know there's a lot of gator pride. I don't understand it, but there it is. And so as you can see, I love my students to this day. They're my family. They're my everything. I know you all feel the same way. And I love seeing them grow, and they're a part of your community, of your Aventura, of your Northeast Dade community. And they're starting out their lives, many of my students, and eventually they'll have children, and hopefully I'll be able to serve those children as well. Beyond the classroom, I've been an advocate for public schools in all ways, especially on behalf of teachers, of course, as a steward for United Teachers of Dade. Improving the education system from within has been my number one priority, and that's why I ran. And that's why I felt this was a great opportunity to, to be able to further grow the opportunities for our students. I fought for policies that have been implemented in Miami Dade, in Tallahassee, and even in DC. And I've been involved with the School Excellence Committee at my school. I've also, at the local level, been involved with the League of Women Voters and also with the Hispanic Scholarship Fund. A few experiences of note, in 2010, when Governor Charlie Crist was being forced to tie our students' performance to everything. This was beginning of, you know, race to the top. This was the beginning of the performance-based, you know, retributions or whatever. They, we didn't know enough, and they were unfair. So we were able to perform an organized kind of sick-out with, throughout the entire state. And we were critical in organizing that in Miami Dade, and Governor Crist at the time vetoed that performance-based bill. In 2013, I was the National Education Association Political Advocate of the Year. And 2014, I led a study with the League of Women Voters throughout the states, a consensus study regarding, regarding race and socioeconomic equity. And in 2018, I was a part of leading the push in Miami Dade County for the referendum money. So these are some of the policies I've been fighting for. I can tell you right now that I continue fighting, especially under these very difficult circumstances and with COVID-related issues with safety, transparency, and ensuring parental choice. That's, the parents are making the decisions based on really transparent information that they're receiving, that's timely and actualized and, and true and honest. So that's what I've been really working on in my first two months. And aside from that, we're preparing for the budget cuts that are happening. It will be between 6% to 10% of budget cuts. Our superintendent has said that this will have no loss of employment, so teachers, you do not have to worry. So we're certain that we're going to take a look at the budget. We're going to work together. And even though we'll have to make difficult decisions and painful decisions, we're going to do right by our teachers and students who show up every day and make our schools the excellent place that they are. Regardless of these challenges, we have to do everything possible together, and that's why working with organizations such as this is really important. I strongly believe in a few things, but some that I'm going to bring here are a hands-on education. So for starters, I know that a great example of this is the Aventura Marketing Council's efforts with Anchors Away, a program where students are taking sailboats that have been reconfigured for students with special needs. So that's something very important. That is a mutual relationship building, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart. As a teacher, I worked with the Best Buddies Groups at schools and also helped to write grants so that our students with special needs received school site interventions and community-based interventions where they could go out and have hands-on learning. So hands-on learning is everything to me. That's going to mean a lot of different things at the three levels of school, elementary, middle, and high. But we're going to work together that our students are prepared for that market out there and that they have real-world skills. We also need to take a look at our curriculum, what we're doing now, and see how we can improve their educational experiences. We see now that spending too much time on a screen is not working for our students, learning virtually. And for even our students not virtual, they're spending a lot of time on the computer. Then they have to do homework. Then they have to do research, and then they also use screen time for entertainment. So we really need to start going back, looking, going back and looking ahead, both, and understanding how we can have a very balanced approach, not only to technology, but to our forms of learning, our differentiated instruction, as we, as we all know, so that we can provide our students a well-rounded experience. These are just some things that I hope to be involved with, with all of you amazing educators on the line. And some examples of what I've done last night, in, in terms of these things, these priorities. Last night at the school board meeting, I introduced an item called Seniors for Seniors, which passed unanimously, and it directed the superintendent to pair up senior citizen organizations with high school seniors. So look out for that, starting March 2021. Dr. K, I didn't see who else is on here, Principal McKnight, et cetera. Seniors for Seniors is coming your way, and it, it's for seniors for two reasons. One, easy one, 18-year-olds, we want, you know, them to be able to have autonomy, and we don't want to put anyone in any safety situations. But also because our seniors, I remember being in the classroom, I remember a line of students coming by and asking me for community service hours for a scholarship. Maybe they only had 80 and they need 20 more because a scholarship requires 100. Also, Bright Futures requires 100. So they always are in need of more hours, and with the pandemic, unfortunately, they have not been able to get them. So right now, we're going to pair up for Seniors for Seniors. Of course, it's going to be very different. They can't go into their homes, but there are ways, whether it's doing a food bank, deliveries, errands, but also just having that connection. and to diminish that isolation. That's very real on both ends, I think, for the youth and for the senior citizens. So this is going to be a great partnership, but it tells us how we can continue to impact our community with our students and our schools. And in the previous school board meeting, I did address forms of learning, especially with the fact that many students are struggling academically, emotionally, and losing attention. And so before we go out and diagnose students, let's say with behavioral or attention disorders, I wanted to bring out a campaign of vision dysfunction and make sure the parents are diagnosing that because right now with the virtual work, there could be a lot of misdiagnosis of students who may not be performing well, but it could be due to a visual dysfunction. So we want to make sure that we are not rushing to diagnose students, especially in this new era. So these are just a few examples. As I close, I want to emphasize that these schools in the north, oh, they're new to me. They're very dear to me. They're very important to me because you all are doing the work that needs to be done. You've been doing a great job. And especially for our charter schools here, I know that you all have your own management team, your own governing board. But I'm proud to represent you. I'm proud to work with you, and I'm proud to work with your students and your families. I want everybody here watching all my administrators to feel comfortable to reach out to me. I will fight for you as I fought for my students and my teachers and my colleagues. I wish everyone a great, great day, a great start of your new year, and I hope to meet you real soon when things get better so we can have some fun.
Thank you. Michael, any questions in the chat room?
No, but I did see Principal McKnight log on a little bit later, so you want to?
Yes, I think we have a couple. One, we have from Sunny Isles Beach Commissioner. I wanted to recognize Commissioner Dana Goldman, and then we also have David McKnight, as Michael said, so if you could unmute yourself and introduce yourself. And we also have Bernie Osborne, I believe, that joined us. So if the two of you could unmute yourselves and introduce yourselves.
Hi, everyone. I'm David McKnight. I'm the principal at Don Sofor Aventura High School, and it's great to be with you all this morning. Thanks for the welcome.
Good morning, Bernie Osborne. Good morning again. Good morning, Ms. Ms. Baez Geller. Great to be, great to be here, be back with the Aventura Marketing today.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Dana, go ahead. Introduce yourself. I'm sorry.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
This is Commissioner Goldman from Sunny Isles Beach. Lucy, welcome and congratulations and looking forward to future collaboration for the benefit of our great city of Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to join us. If anybody has any questions at all of our guest speaker this morning, if you could enter those in the chat room right now, Michael will Michael will announce those and we can get an answer to those. We'll give a minute or two for those. And if not, then I think we're good. Elaine?
I think we're good. Um, you know, if anyone does, this was great. We're all enthused and motivated and yes, and just so you should know, our Avantura Marketing Council Chamber of Commerce has thirteen Dade Partner Schools. So yes, that was certainly, it's always been an initiative and a priority of ours. So and yes, we're always open to taking out more Dade Partners. We're very informal about this Dade partnership. We just want to know what can we do for our schools? So yeah, the schools.
Thank you, Elaine. Michael, I don't see anything. Do you?
Nothing.
All right. So then I sincerely do appreciate everybody's time today, especially our school administrators. We certainly do thank our new school board member Lucia Baez Geller for joining us today. And without that, we certainly do appreciate FPL and Chris's participation and sponsorship for today. I would like to say, I always say this, I know Mayor Enid Wiseman appreciates this, and that is, everybody, please wear your mask on an ongoing basis. Please be safe. Please be healthy. Happy New Year to everybody, and everybody have a very safe and enjoyable weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye, all.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you. Bye, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.